Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh, we have Judy and Stephen.
Hi, Mark.
Hi Judy, evening.
You're Beverly.
Oh yeah, I always have to do that. Thank you.
It doesn't matter. Hi Jennifer.
Hi Judy, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Good.
You hear me?
Good hearing.
Okay, good evening everyone.
Hi, how are you?
Good. Hey, there you are Steve, I just saw you.
I had to shut the door, I'll hear you twice.
Yeah.
Mark, when are we getting our room all mic'd up and everything? And you're on mute?
Can't hear you.
No.
Can't hear you, Mark.
Steve?
Oh, now I can hear you, buddy.
Oh.
Now we can hear you.
Yep, I was, somehow I got muted.
I think we're getting good at this Zoom thing.
Do you have something to say to me Jen?
I was just gonna answer that they were doing the wire, wiring today. To set up the wireless. So they, they ran the wires today.
Now where did Robert go? He was here.
Rob, Rob's here.
I'm here. Oh, there you are.
I see him.
The only see him when he talks, I think.
Okay, he's back. My, my participation screen was more people than it showed.
No. Hi Lisa.
Good evening. I had to close the fireplace. Or it gets really hot in here. How is everybody?
Good.
Good, how are you?
Living the dream.
That's, that's it.
Lisa, you gonna do a plant show this Saturday?
Oh yeah.
What times does it start normally?
It's noon to two.
Where?
Okay.
TIC.
Where?
On TIC.
Where's that?
WTIC AM 1080, the one you used to listen to when the kids were...
W, okay, I used to always listen to that. Now we have more options.
Yes, we do. Well, we've been doing, Len and I started doing that in 2001. Crazy. I took a few years off to take care of my mom, but... It's fun, we have a good time.
Alright, we got everybody.
Right on time.
Yay.
Hello.
Hi.
Hey Bill.
Good evening Bill.
Good evening.
You got good color, Bill, did you go somewhere?
Sorry?
You have good color, either you have a red lamp in front of you or you went somewhere, anything?
I'm flushing.
He's having a hot flash.
Alright, thank you. So, First Selectmen, Stephen and I would like to call this meeting of the Columbia Board of Selectmen to order Tuesday, January 19th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. And of course, first rule of order is to, over the virtual meeting guidelines, this is a web-based call, so we are operating under the following procedures. This session is being both video and audio recorded, thank you. Board members and staff will generally remain on mute except when speaking or voting and will generally be keeping video on the, of themselves on throughout the meeting. If a member of the public creates an audio or video disruption, they may be manually ejected from the meeting upon recommendation of the staff for the First Selectmen. For public input before the meeting, it should have been emailed to publicinput@columbiact.org 24 hours before the meeting. For public input during the meeting, your comments can be submitted through the chat feature in the Zoom meeting or wave your hand and request that your mic be unmuted. Please include in both, in both methods, your name and address. If we do have audience as citizens, so if we don't answer you right away, you can certainly bring it up during that time. Having said that, anybody have any questions? Yes, I do. Mark, what, do people, even though I read this every other week, is it somewhere that people know to submit their comments 24 hours prior to? Other than on our website? Mark's frozen.
Mark's muted, well he's frozen.
Either that or he's holding real still because he doesn't have an answer.
That's probably it.
Or he's sleeping.
So, you know, every other week I ask for a moment of silence and there's a lot of things we needed for... Dear God, the healing of our country. And continuous working toward an end to this pandemic, so if you please, a moment of silence. Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Was out, I think Friday, so you should have had a look at it. I make a motion, we approve the agenda as written, any discussion? All those in favor, Bill?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Even I vote yes, thank you. Approval of the minutes. I make a motion, we approve the Columbia Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from Tuesday, January 5th, 2021. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a revision to 10.1.
Okay.
You should read, W. O'Brien rode in on his high horse and expressed his displeasure. I apologize to the board, I overreacted to that situation.
Well, first of all, I didn't see a horse, so I can't put that in there. And second of all, Bill, honestly, I don't think you really overreacted, you were right and, you know, we'll, we'll certainly learn from it and grow from it and do better, believe me.
Well, I feel, I regret that I, I feel like I overreacted and I apologize.
Well. Okay.
It's all good.
Yeah. Yeah.
No worries.
Other than that, all those in favor, Bill?
I, yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Even I vote yes, thank you. Audience of citizens, no. Anne, hi, anything? Want to wait till later? If you can cover it.
I think what I have to say is on the agenda.
Thank you, very good. Old business, Charter Revision, Revision Recommendations. So the group is doing great work. They're looking at a couple of things and it was brought to their attention, my attention. That some of the levels in our decisions to what the Board of Selectmen can approve. Without the approval of Five Pack and that with the approval of Board of Selectmen and Five Pack and then a maximum for the current year, maybe time for change, maybe move them up a little bit. So I draw your attention to, I guess everybody has this, Mark, the first page from Halloran and Sage memorandum?
Yes.
Great. So under about two-thirds of the way down, it says Section 9.13. They talked about each, the second bullet, each transfer shall be limited to a maximum of $500 without the approval of Five Pack. Now, we seem to be moving money around in different areas. Unfortunately, we have to do some creative moving of funds. Fortunately, we have the ability to do that without, without dipping into, you know, contingency or the general fund. So, it's been brought to my attention that a $5,000 limit ceiling without the approval of Five Pack was brought, you know, we're kind of considering that. And in that same, are we going up with the, from $10,000 to $20,000 for the approval of Board and Five Pack, Mark?
Another option would be to have a percentage of the budget?
Yeah, well that's...
Before you have to go to a town meeting.
Right, but we're talking about $10,000, $10,000 maximum, okay, so help me out here, we're looking for 5,000 without the approval of Five Pack. And are we leaving it at 10,000 for approval of the Board of Selectmen and Five Pack?
That could be moved to 20,000 or 25,000.
Yeah, I think I'd like to move that up, I'd ask for comments from the board here. And then a maximum of 20,000 for the current fiscal year for any agency or department that may transfer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen and Five Pack. You know, a lot of time, we just moved... We just moved $50,000 from one to the other and, you know, I honestly think it will be moving things around without taking from the general fund and without going to contingencies. So what are we looking for that, Mark, a maximum of?
Well, that's, that's where you might want to make that a maximum transfer in aggregate, meaning a total transfer of .15% of the annual budget.
Right, that's what we discussed, but now, I...
That's how some other towns are starting to go, because this is, this charter is gonna be for 10 years. So if you tie it to a percentage of the budget, it'll, it'll stay within inflation.
Where does the commission stand as far as your thoughts on this?
They haven't done transfers yet, so they're...
We haven't got that.
They're gonna hear from you and Five Pack, you tonight, Five Pack tomorrow, and then I'll report that to, to the Charter Review Commission. They've only done purchasing maximums before a three-bid requirement and they came up with 30,000 for that.
Now, if we were doing a percentage of the budget, what would that, like this year, you're saying 1.5?
.15% is 27,000.
27,000.
Not, not 27,000? What budget are you talking about? It says not excluding the Board of, so, a Board of Education, so at $14 million out of 20, that's $6 million budget. Right?
Well, I did it up, total expenses, I think we'd have to define which total budget do you want to use?
How many total budgets do we have, Mark? We have the town?
Well, you have the, the budget including general fund, you have total expenses. You could have the total past budget.
I, I was thinking you were just gonna do the total past, like P-A-S-S-E-D budget.
Or the budget we're in.
Excluding the Board of Education.
And excluding our savings or?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, then it would be a different percentage.
Well, depends on how much of the ceiling, ceiling you're looking for. At .015, $6 million is $90,000.
Right.
That's high. Yeah.
No, wait a minute. Point.
.15 is ridiculous, I mean that's, that's a lot. .015 is still 90,000, right?
.15%? No, .15% of 4 million is only $6,000. .15%. So if we did 4 million times, well 10% is 40,000. So 5% would be 20,000.
Which is what it is.
Right, so I, maybe you want to figure out what your target dollar amount is, we can figure out the math later. But it would be something that would be tied to the budget and would go up with inflation.
Alright, Bill, go ahead.
I'd be leaning toward having a set figure. I think every time you want to get into the situation, we'd be struggling right now trying to do the math.
Right.
True.
So we're thinking 20,000 isn't high enough.
Maximum of $20,000 for the current fiscal year for any agency or department that may be transferred with the approval of Board of Five Pack, Board of Selectmen and Five Pack, a maximum of 20,000.
About 50.
And that's the aggregate, so when we get it, we have to know what the previous transfers have been.
Right.
So we can add it up.
Well, I'm okay with 50, because I think we've moved 50, it all told, from one to another, you know, in the, over the years a couple of times, because it just seems to work out that way. So what we're looking to recommend to the Charter Revision Group is from 500 to 5,000, from 10,000 with the Board of Selectmen and Five Pack up to 25,000 and then a 50,000 for a year total aggregate.
Okay.
Anybody's comments on that, so you understand? $5,000 without the, without Five Pack. 25,000 with the approval of the Board of Selectmen and Five Pack and then $50,000 for the current fiscal year.
Okay.
Now, Five Pack tomorrow night can set their own limits and then both recommendations will go to the Charter Revision Group and they'll, they'll take a look at it, correct, Mark?
Yes.
Alright. Are we okay with that? I don't think we need a motion, are we just okay with it, a group?
Sounds fine to me.
Sounds reasonable.
Rob?
Yep, that sounds good, I'll just read the next one, yeah.
Alright. So Mark, you have that, Jen, you good?
Yes.
Got it.
One, one nuance on that is that I think you should allow transfers within a budget.
Same department?
Within a department that do not require Board of Selectmen and Five Pack approval, it's already in your budget.
But if you want to move it from, let's say, Department 001, that, .1 to 001.4, it's in the same department, but it's just a different line item in that department for accounting purposes?
Right.
Okay, so you just want to move it from one to the other?
It'd be like if you had money in Public Works and Contracted Services and then the department said, you know what, we can build that parking lot, but now you have to move it into salary. You know, so your budget line's big enough, you're still within your approved budget. And you might want just Board of Selectmen approval, maybe not Five Pack, but I, I, I just think we're over getting crazy with our transfer protocol.
The only thing I like about it is that we kind of know what's going on. So, you know, it gives you a heads up when she, when we're transferring one to another, you know, it doesn't usually encounter a problem, but it sure does let us know what's going on in town.
Yeah, but we're not saying, we're not saying the board doesn't look at it every time and we, we allow it for notification, it's just, we don't have to have...
It's information.
Meeting, Mark, is that what you're saying, if it's over?
I'm thinking, I'm thinking maybe just confine it to Board of Selectmen and then set limits that it hits Five Pack like we just have.
Well, there's two things, you know, Five Pack may want to be more, as involved as they are, but I actually like that because sometimes they look at dollars and cents. And I look at, you know, like jobs and a vision for things to happen and shit, Board of Selectmen and we kind of look at it. And it's not a dollars and cents thing, it's a, an action type of thing, so I actually like that recommendation.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I agree with you.
Yeah, I do too.
Sounds good, I agree.
Jennifer, just give me a thumbs up, you understand that?
I got it.
Alright, thank you. And this is an ongoing process until they put the charter out for a vote, so. In addition to that, next thing on there is the wording for bids. Three pages in, I believe, from Rich Roberts, he had a suggestion that on 27-7, the use of other bids. The town may use bids called for by another governmental agency in exactly the same way. We don't do that already, Mark?
Well, we do honor CROG bids and being on the state bid list, but it's not specified in our charter or our bid policy. It's just a...
Favorite nation type status, or what does it do for us, Mark?
Oh, it just, you're just actually, in case anybody ever pushed back and said, well, your, your policy doesn't... Oh, it just, you're just actually, in case anybody ever pushed back and said, well, your, your policy doesn't allow a state bid to count. As an official low bidder. We, we're just making it clear.
Okay, yeah, I don't have a problem with that. If they're the low bidder, state bid probably rare, but if they're a low bidder, I have no problem with it. Anybody else?
Nope.
So we're good to uh re- put, recommend they put that in the charter, Mark?
I'll, I'll figure out the exact wording we're going with, Rich.
Okay.
And then the dollar amounts of purchasing requirements.
Yeah, uh, bid purchase, we're looking at going up on those, well. Any purchase order, goods or services, five hundred dollars can be dealt with in discretion of authorized, but any purchase of goods or services greater than five hundred dollars requires a purchase order. With a department head and a town administrator signature. Any purchase of goods, services, a thousand to ten thousand requires two solicited verbal quotations. And any purchase of goods or services, ten to fifteen requires such David Lee. Uh, three written, and any purchase of goods or service requires fifteen thousand requires sealed bid. Are they too low?
Yes, um, this was discussed in the Charter Review Commission, and they agreed as a group. That thirty thousand would be a good threshold before sealed bids are required.
Okay.
So they doubled the fifteen.
Yep.
And personally, I think the five hundred is too low. I would double that to a thousand. And then I'd say a thousand to five thousand. Um.
Two verbal quotes?
Well, right now, we have two verbal quotes, a thousand to ten thousand, and that's, that's fine. So if you double the five hundred to a thousand. One thousand to ten thousand, ten thousand to probably um.
Thirty.
Thirty thousand.
Ten thousand to thirty.
Yeah, uh, it's three written, and to ten, you might want that to go up to, maybe it's one thousand to fifteen thousand, and fifteen to thirty. It's, it's not critical, it's just um.
Uh, yeah, I don't have a problem with that. You know, I'm looking at the five hundred, the one thing I'm looking at is the five hundred dollar open purchase from a department head. Um. Yeah, that's fine. I guess move that to the thousand dollars.
Yeah, cuz they're, they're within their budget, so they're not.
I get it.
Going crazy.
That takes a look at them anyway, right?
Right, we, well, so do I. I look at everything.
So, okay.
And then I would just go a thousand to fifteen thousand, and fifteen thousand to thirty.
Okay, and then uh fifty thousand for sealed bids?
No, sealed bids stay a- above thirty.
Above thirty.
Okay. Alright, anybody else? Good, good, no good?
Good, good.
I think it's fine.
Alright, I see.
Everything costs more than it used to.
Lisa, we're good?
Yep.
Okay, that thumbs up, Jen. Perfect. Alright, uh, new business now, Mark?
Yes.
Excellent.
Uh, unless the board had anything else in the charter under the Board of Selectmen that they wanted to bring forward.
Does everybody have a copy of the charter? I have a copy. You have a copy there?
Yes.
Alright.
I do.
Yep.
When you can't sleep one night, take a look at it, and you'll have no problem going to sleep.
Be quick after that.
Well, um, at least it's written in the King's English, you know, we can understand it somewhat. Alright, thank you. Uh, alright, Mark, new business?
Um, Ann Donick, the chairman of, that is what I'm on, right? Yeah, Zegda Farm Management Plan?
Yep.
Ann Donick has brought forward a revised um Zegda Farm Open Space Management Plan. She's been working on this for quite some time. And um was able to review it by uh Paula Stahl, the town planner, the Zegda Farm Volunteer. Uh, Commission, also the Zegda Farm Management Committee. Uh, the Open Space Committee, the Columbia Conservation Agricultural Commission, uh, everyone had input, and she came up with a final document. The main changes are updates to all the maps, um, the goals are the same, but they took out of the management plan everything they'd accomplished. So it wouldn't get confusing. They added new objectives, revised responsibilities and timetables, and the main thing there was she put. Different groups in charge of different things, like Department of Public Works. It doesn't mean Department of Public Works. Will do the work. It means they're in charge of subcontracting the work, and a lot of it is field management. I see that where we have some issues where the fields need to be uh brush hogged. And we've, we've attacked one of those fields with a five-year lease to hay it. So one field is under control, the other field has lifetime use by Ronnie Zegda at the moment, and there's still a couple other fields we need to address. Um. Plus, and Ann's on the call, she has things to add extra, um. She's also. Uh, mirroring what we're doing in the Wells Woods State Park, which is now called the Mono Pond State Park. And the group has added uh bow hunting uh on the property where appropriate. And that would be managed by the town with um the town giving special permits. For any bow hunter that would be in there to keep eyes and ears on the property.
Oh, is that new for the Zegda Farm area? I do see bow hunting under the recreation.
Yes, so that's new. It's already in the Mono Pond State Park, and um. Bow hunting only, no rifle, and they're uh matching that in the Zegda Farm property.
Now, will this have to go to a town meeting?
It should.
Yeah.
That's probably up to the board.
I think it should, um, what am I, in it, and you know, being a gardener, I like all this, but um. They're talking about putting up an orchard, and an orchard takes a tremendous amount of input. Uh, you have to be in a, it's not easy to grow fruit trees in Connecticut, just saying, and um. If you have berry bushes, as lovely as they are, they're a feast for every wild creature that's out there, so you'd be including. All sorts of fencing and stuff you would need if you do something around that. Otherwise, you're just feeding wildlife. Especially if people aren't there, you know, if you got a dog and you're around there all the time, and they're marking and scaring away, you got some relief maybe, but most of the time, you have to fence stuff up. Especially blueberries, any berry for the birds and deer love it all. And bear, you gotta, you got blueberries, they can come and rip out your bear, your blueberry bushes quite fast. And if you're gonna do it, bees, same thing there, the bears will come and wipe out the bees. You're getting more and more. Just thoughts, there'd be an input in fencing.
Well, you know, in the last uh round, these regulations, hunting was an issue also.
I'm sorry.
The last, last time we had the regulations for Zegda Farm, there was a big vote on hunting. It was very controversial. So if we're gonna allow. Bow hunting, that will be some, an issue for some people.
So you wanna send it to a town meetings that we're gonna do?
Well, I'm just, I'm, I'm asking the question, I.
First of all, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I, um, I'd like to go through, I haven't looked at it, to be honest with you. Has everybody read it? And you're all comfortable to send it to a town meeting? Do you wanna look at it?
It's very well written, um, and it's very thorough, but I do believe that there's, I, I'd like to see more. More um information on what it would cost, cuz I would assume, you know, where are you gonna get the funds for berry bushes and fruit trees and fencing to go around it all?
I think there was an expense for some additional uh landscaping that would have to be done, or mowing, just, just what the cost would be, would be good.
But also, this is a plan, um, I, the, um. Community garden wasn't, was, was, wasn't there when they did the original plan, and that's developed, and now they got fencing, they've got a well, and they got shit, so. This is kind of in the future. I'm, I'm assuming that someone will take it on and do an orchard, or do blueberry bushes, and they'll have to do what they have to do. I don't think we have to prove how they're gonna, they'll do their, we should have to prove that's a goal.
That makes sense.
But I think when you're, when you add hunting, much as I think you're gonna need to add hunting if you're gonna have all that agriculture, um. It, it's just nice that people have an input, and it's also one way of maybe inspiring a little bit of involvement. I don't think a lot, I never knew there was a sledding hill at Zegda Farm. Holy moly, I would have been there.
Probably haven't any snow.
I know, you have to have snow to have a sle-.
Well, you know, I heard about it the last snowstorm right before Christmas, and I should have gone. So toboggans are for.
What are we looking to do, Mark?
Um, probably should bring it up on the next board select meeting, let everybody review it one more time. You could also have a public hearing. Because we can't have a town meeting during COVID, so. You, you'd almost have to have a public hearing and then approve it by the Board of Selectmen.
May I speak?
Please.
Steve?
Yes.
Thank you. This management plan. Excuse me, is an update of a plan that already went to town meeting. So personally, I don't think it's necessary. In Joshua's trust, every one of her original management plans are passed by the board. Of trustees, which would be equivalent to the Board of Selectmen. And then, when we update them. Um, it only has to go to the stewardship committee for approval.
Uh, well, thank you, Ann, but I guess my question is, uh, we're adding bow hunting into this, correct?
Yeah.
I don't remember the meeting. Rob said it was a little.
We don't have, we don't have hunting there now.
So we're adding bow hunting.
Oh, oh, so that's why you wanted to go to town meeting?
No, I wanna go to town meeting because the other four people that are looking at me said we need to go to a town meeting. If it costs us money, I don't wanna go to a town meeting.
No.
Um. But, but I don't wanna do something like adding hunting to an area, um, it just. You know, the, the word uh shenanigans has already been laid upon me on different things, so. It'll look like the shenanigans of adding hunting to the Zegda Farm without allowing the people to talk about it.
Oh, okay.
So.
And in response to Lisa about the orchard, the orchard is already started. They have apple trees, half of them died.
Yeah, they're hard.
And so far, they, they wanted to leave, leave it in the plan for berry bushes. But it was in the original plan. And nobody's done anything about it for all the reasons that you mentioned.
There are.
I just left it in because it was an original objective that was not met.
Hey, what other changes in the update? What other changes are made?
Um, the hunting. Um, and mostly the responsibilities.
Yeah, I saw that the DPW responsible, and I know that they're, Mark said that they're not responsible to do it per se, but the kind of. I don't know, be a, a, a answer to it, or I, I just find that. It may fall on DPW because the volunteers, um, I know they're good. But we're not getting any younger, and I, I don't, I, I mean, are there younger volunteers stepping up? Um, so it's like it's gonna end up being DPW, especially if it's written in here.
I, I had two things on that note. One is it would be helpful if we had a copy of the old plan, so we had something, you know, can't really. Say if I agree with the changes when I know, don't know what they are. And then secondly, um. Going to a town meeting, or even a public hearing, or, or something, or putting it in the Columbia Views. And get, there's so many new people coming into town, young families. I would say, you know, you need, that's a great way to drum up business and get some more interest in it, cuz it could be worthwhile to people with younger children. Who don't have much sun.
People love the garden.
Not everybody does.
I know.
It's out of the way. So I'd love to see, maybe you can write something up and put it in Columbia Views.
How about you put this?
We can get a copy of the current one and go to people who want it, and then we can see they can look at it, and we'll talk about this next time. I don't think we're in a rush for the spring cleanup or mowing for a while, so.
Or maybe you could take the old one and as, as you're adding new stuff, underline it, so we see, rather than, so we, you know, going back and forth, or something like that. Or highlight the new cha- the changes.
Alright, we have a plan, Mark?
Yes, I'll take it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ann.
Thanks, Ann.
Uh.
Good, Ann, thank you.
This is Town Administrator's Report.
Okay, good news. We found a floater to help, uh, we got down to only one floater with flow. And uh I was able to hire Karen Budsky. She's one of our registrars. And uh felt she had some time that she could help out the different departments in uh floating, so we can welcome Karen. And the COVID nineteen vaccine rollout has started. Um, right now, it's seventy five and older, uh, shortly after that, it'll be sixty five to seventy four, and they're okaying. Uh, essential personnel that are in contact with the public. Uh, so right now, we have put our Public Works Department into the system to schedule their vaccine. And as I get more direction, we'll eventually be offering it to municipal employees that are uh having public contact. So that's coming. And we just took title to the Department of Public Works' new dump truck. It's a model three forty eight Peterbilt, and um it was, the first truck that came was leaking antifreeze. Uh, Beth Lunt rejected the truck, sent it back, and they had to um. Put a whole new head on the motor, and so it's basically a brand-new motor now. And uh Beth negotiated, made them add for no charge, actually, it's a one dollar charge. Uh, an extra five years on the mo- on the motor's warranty. Um, so that's, we're, we're satisfied now that that should be covered. And then, um, we also.
Mark, Mark, was this a new truck or a, or a used truck?
Brand new.
Okay.
So now it's, it's passed our review, the first, the first round, it did not. We sent it back to the factory. Um, Stephen and I have been doing a lot of work to try to tackle traffic and accidents in town, uh, working with the DOT. And um we came aware of the Yukon Safety Circuit Rider System. Um, got in touch with them, and they actually had a grant for speed signs, so we signed up and got two. Speed signs that are in our conference room. Rob's probably looking at them right now.
Yeah, they're very impressive. Everyone will have to check them out.
Yeah, they're, what, what we had was the speed sign. Yeah, they're, what, what we had was the speed signs that were very portable. These will require Public Works to install them. They come with a solar power system. So they're really designed to be placed in a longer period of time in a location than our super portable ones. So now we have the luxury of two very portable and two somewhat portable signs. So we'll have four speed signs in town. And these are big enough, you could put them on a state highway as well. So you'll be, you'll be seeing those shortly. And then the budget process has started. I've met with a lot of the departments. We'll be wrapping up next week, and then I'll be preparing to present to the board of selectmen. So everything's coming together, and that's all I have, Stephen.
Did somebody say something?
Yeah, I have a question about the COVID-19 vaccine rollout. My concern is, is that, you know, there's, it's been a bottleneck and everything like that. At least I'm hearing that in the news. Are, are we dedicating any town resources, meaning staff, to this? As far as the rollout?
Yes, we, Jen is handling the municipal employees. The Board of Ed is handling the Board of Ed employees. And Bernadette will be helping the 209 seniors that are over 75. So we're creating, and the fire department took over for emergency personnel. So we have four enrollment platforms for the VAMS program, which is their scheduling program. So we're trying to get people and helping people get in line to get the vaccine.
How about the social worker? Are you getting the social worker involved in this at all?
Yes, I just had a meeting with her today and spent some time giving her information that she could help someone determine if they're qualified for the vaccine and how to get into the system.
Because I'm thinking that, I mean, it's just gonna, maybe we could start something to give her some extra day, temporarily give her an extra day a week to help her to, you know, help people through this process. Just something to talk, we don't have to sign now. I was thinking to put it on the agenda for next time.
Bill, just to let you know, I've been up through the, the Vaccine Center at Mansfield Center. Also, I talked to people who went to the Hartford Hospital today, and I know people who have gone to Manchester Hospital. And there's not been a wait time in any of those three locations for people going there. As a matter of fact, they've taken people early to get them in. It's really 15, less than 15 minutes a person. They get their shot, they go wait for 15 minutes. The person administering the shot, which my wife is gonna do tomorrow at St. Francis, if anybody wants to get in line. I've given her a list of names, people to take care of for me.
Would be nice.
Give me a little grief on Facebook, here you go. But no, the bottom line is, from the three places, there hasn't really been a bottleneck.
Good.
Connecticut has done very well.
Yeah.
As the states go, that we have been given extra vaccines because we've been rolling them out a lot, a lot sooner and a lot better than a lot of states, so.
That's good news.
See, I think, I think the bottleneck is, I mean, you make an appointment, so it's kind of getting online and figuring out how to make the appointment, how to access all that stuff. I think it's great to make the appointments because it does speed things up a bit.
I agree. You're right. The, the system, the system to get your appointment is a pain in the neck.
Yeah, it is.
I mean, I honestly, I couldn't do it. I had to go to my employer, and I had to push them, and they were looking at me. They didn't even know about the system and stuff.
Right.
Now it's out there a lot more. But the fact that we're giving it to people over the age of 75 and some people with comorbidities, we're way ahead of a lot of states.
We are, yeah.
We are, definitely, and I'm, I'm pleased. It's just, it's just kind of scheduling, it seems to be a bit of a pain in the butt. But once you're there, I, I knew people that have the same thing. They've gone, get their shot. They don't have to wait in line at all.
Right. So it's been good. Thank you.
Mark, is Bernadette online with the DPW to get, since she's dealing with so many seniors, is she in the front of the line too? I'm probably the social worker.
Not quite yet, but that's coming shortly. We're just waiting for the green light. They said, end of January, beginning of February, for key municipal employees that are in touch with the public.
All right.
So I think it's within a couple of weeks.
Okay, that's good.
If they keep these vaccines flowing.
Right.
They're doing a good job.
I talked with somebody today, and he was very frustrated that his parents, two sets of parents, his wife and his, over the age of 75 in New Jersey, couldn't even get their appointments and everything, and it's very frustrating for them. So we're doing a, we're doing a very good job.
Yes.
Correspondence there for, to look at. Oh, and the other thing I wanted to bring up with Mark's town administrator. Every time we get a question about traffic and stuff, we do contact the state and we get it. I mean, they shot us down once again for a light at West Street and Hunt Road. They said that the sightlines were good enough, and I know we have one in now for Robinson Road up at Skyline there, at Skyline Farm. It's gonna be, I, I don't, my, my guess is, we don't say no to anything. We send it to the state to take a look at it. I don't know what they would, they wouldn't, they're certainly not gonna put a light there. You got one or two people exiting Robinson Road. It is very difficult coming off of Robinson Road and looking left. I think as we grow older, our reflexes get a little bit slower too. That doesn't help. But certainly putting one of those portable signs right at the, on the way up that hill when you enter into Columbia, maybe slows some people down. But Judy, we contacted the state. We asked them to look into it, and hopefully they'll get out here and take.
I probably wasn't thinking of light. He was thinking of widening it. It's really gotta be the state that makes that decision.
Yeah, I, for one person, I'm not sure they're widening it. Yes, Lisa?
Left-hand turn lanes, like they have on Route 6 all up and down, having left-hand turn lanes at West Street and Hunt Road.
Yep, you know, we asked them about that also. We asked them about that also because a lot of the problems with the accidents there is when somebody stopped to take a left, people go around them and they don't see the people turning at the Hunt Road. That, my friend was killed on his motorcycle there because somebody did just that. They turned him, or they turned him. We asked them about widening a road. The other thing was to narrow the road so people could go around them. And the state said, no, we're not doing anything. What we can do is put up a, you know, caution type signs, you know. It is frustrating, but that's their road, and that was the report that we got back from them. No.
It's a bad spot.
Yep.
Yeah, it is.
Um, okay. Correspondence, we're all good. Uh, we have budget. Any transfer?
Transfers.
Transfers, no transfers? Oh, wait a minute, I see them. No, yes, no.
We have transfers. Funds first.
Okay, okay. $4,298 in transfers.
Correct.
From contingency, though, to legal notices. What was that for?
Are you talking about the tax collector?
Yes.
Yeah.
So the tax collector requested additional funding to cover the estimated cost from the budget for legal notices for 2021 due to COVID-19 outbreak in the adoption of the tax deferral program. The cost of legal notices have increased the amount of the projected budget when she prepared it. So she has to alert the town that they have three extra months.
Yep, okay. All right, so I make a motion, we approve the transfer of $1,218 from contingency to Tax Department Legal Notices. Any discussion? All those in favor? I vote yes. Lisa?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The next is salaries, Rec Department to General Supplies and Professional Tech. Cover costs, either budget, Rec Department, but, well, this is in the same rec to rec. Yes.
Yes, it's staying within rec.
$880 from salaries to general supplies and professional tech in the Recreation Department budget line. All the discussion, all those in favor? Lisa?
Yes.
Uh, Steve and I vote yes. Judy?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Thank you. I make a motion, we transfer $1,500 from waste disposal salaries to waste disposal overtime. Well, unfortunately, we had our two guys down there get sick. We had to bring in people that, and we pay them overtime to do that. But we have a, we have a third position down there. That's why it's going from salary to overtime, so same budget line, so. That's that. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Lisa?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Steve and I vote yes, thank you. Uh, is it, is this more transfer this?
No, now refunds.
Okay, these are transfers from last week, $25,000? Yeah.
That's for five pack tomorrow. Maybe it got snuck in.
Yeah, okay, sneaky time, nice try. All right, refunds. Make a motion, we refund money in the amount of $606.19 to those listed here. Well, that's his, that's his fireman debatement. Okay, that's what most of that is. Any discussion? All those in favor? Lisa?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Steve and I vote yes, thank you. And bills in the amount of 240, I make a motion, we pay bills in the amount of $248,668.34 consisting of 2020 regular paychecks, credit card. Uh, what happened? They lose the check and we had to reissue it? Oh, it's $45, $45.
Big one's your truck. Your dump truck, $183,000.
So that, that's the new truck, $183?
Right.
Yeah.
Well, it's actually 245, 61 from General Fund 10 and 183 from Fund 20. Right? Because over on the right, it says a total of 245.
No, I don't think so. The truck was 183, 580. That's what the check's for.
Okay, what's the 61,000 for, number 10?
When you say number 10, I don't, I don't see it. Where is it?
Okay, let me show you. Right here, Mark. See where it says?
Oh, on the front?
Right there. 63,000 or something, 61. And then next to it is 183,000. And over on the right, it says 245 for total.
Well, I think 64,000 is all your other checks.
Yeah.
So out of capitals, 183, that's the truck. And out of the Zegda Farm rec is 108, and 64,000 is the total of all these other checks.
61,000. Is that how we usually list it? I don't look at it that hard.
Seems to be a different setup.
Okay. Okay, 2021 regular, 2412. All right, I'll look at this. Let me see.
Yeah, so regular checks was 61,000 that you were saying. And credit cards, 84, and paychecks, 2,300.
We get on the list, they have them all right there. Okay. Yeah, it looks like it.
All right.
Okay, any discussion? Any more discussion?
I had one on the, the Health District.
Yeah, that's a quarter, quarterly payment.
Department of Agriculture? No, that's a chip. Where, where are you looking?
It was around $7,000, the quarterly?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And what do we get for that?
The Health District, that's all your restaurant inspections for food safety. That's all your flu shot clinics. That's all this contact tracing for the coronavirus. The shot clinics for the Corona injection and the flu shot clinics. And all your environmental soil analysis for the entire building department of looking for septic systems and all that.
We pay $30,000 a year to that?
Um, part of their payment comes in revenues from the costs for doing a lot of those services.
Yeah.
So that's just part of their revenue stream, our quarterly. And it's based on a per capita for the quarterly.
So they split that up between all the towns? They're, they're?
Right.
Okay, I vote yes. Lisa?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Right. Uh, let me see, we have, we have, audience of citizens. Ian, anything else?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Board member comments? None. I make a motion, we adjourn this meeting. All those in favor? Lisa?
Oh, yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Bill?
Please. Please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Everybody say say.
Good night, take care.
Take care.